I'd like to call the order of the committee, the whole, for April 27th, 2021 at 5:35 PM. We've done the pledge. Roll call.
Alderman Madden.
Here.
Alderman Kubaki.
Here.
Alderman Engelhardt.
Here.
Alderman Kapusta is not here. Alderman Terrence is not here. Alderman Hamel.
Here.
And Alderman Wolf.
Here.
Mayor Petfalski is here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
Meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Approval of the minutes from February 23rd, 2021?
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. New business discussion? Discussion of sewer backup claim policies and possible reconsideration of previous denial of claims. This is for the sewer backup claims that we had for the, I'll call it the Tri-Lakes area in District One. Last council meeting we had, we denied the claims. However, the notice that went out to the citizens at the time was very tight, to say the least, and they wanted an opportunity to present their case to the council. I thought by putting it on a cow, we could let them talk at least, and then after they're done saying what they want to say, we can discuss different options that we can go going forward. So, saying that, is there anyone? Do you have one representative from your group, or are you going to all come up and speak, or how would you like to do this?
Mayor, my name is Mike Hallman. We would like the opportunity to all speak because we all have individual circumstances that I believe warrant attention. And we've asked for this opportunity to speak with city officials before to present each individual case, and we thank you for giving us this opportunity to do so this evening, so.
Okay, so, just little ground rules here. I'm not going to put a time limit on it, but if it starts getting real long, I'm going to ask you to try to wrap it up a little bit. We do have other meetings after this, and I don't mean to cut you short by any means, so I'm going to give you a lot of leeway, but, you know, if the sun starts going down on the first talker, when you come up here, just state your name and address for the record, and then say what you need to say at that point.
And one way to keep it shorter, I guess, would be not repetitive. So, just say, "I agreed with the last speaker," or, you know, the same subject, and move on from that, and get to your points that are different, that it would help us out as a whole, too.
Okay. And again, there are seven homeowners that have been affected by this. Three of the homeowners could not make it for various reasons, but they've submitted letters that they've asked us to read on their behalf. Again, these letters are fairly short, so I don't, in the essence of time and the interest of time, not to waste your time as well. We've tried to keep our presentation short, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I would like to start out, first of all, reading from Trish Crocker, an individual who was affected by this, who could not be here for health reasons. Trish's address is S-75W-13127 Oxford Court here in Muskego, and I'll read her letter that she had submitted here. Dear council members, my name is Trish Crocker, and this letter is being read on my behalf as I am unable to attend this meeting due to my personal health and fragile state. I think it's important for you to know that I am suffering from terminal ovarian cancer, and this ordeal has been an excessive strain and stress on my already difficult situation. This accident left me exposed to extremely toxic waste while in my home, made all the more distressing as I'm suffering from a compromised immune system. I had no place to go because of COVID and my immune system, so I was forced to remain exposed to this toxicity until the approved people could arrive and clean it up, which took several days. I became incredibly ill, to the point where I was hallucinating. I passed out on the floor of my living room while going for the phone to contact help. I legitimately thought this incident was going to kill me. While battling this horrendous plight, I've had to figure out how to financially compensate the workers brought in to clean up the toxic mess that flooded into my home and remodel what was left in the basement. I was told that we should go ahead with handling the cleanup and remodeling, and that it would be taken care of by the city, but now we're getting stonewalled, not only by having to pay for an outside company to come in and clean, but there were also numerous possessions that were lost due to exposure to the waste. Some of these items cannot be replaced, and others will be difficult to locate. Additionally, the amount of damage done required large areas of my finished basement to be ripped out and destroyed. Fixing what was damaged is going to cost over $20,000. This financial burden should not be the responsibility of homeowners that did nothing wrong, and almost six months later, the repairs on my home are slow-going. As we wait for the city of Muskego to provide the aid, we were led to believe they would provide when the event originally occurred. This kind of unforeseen accident is not covered by standard homeowner's insurance. The long and short of it is that a tremendous amount of damage was caused to seven homes, and to force us homeowners and tax-paying residents of Muskego to bear the burden for cleaning up the city's accident is unacceptable. The exposure to the sewage was a serious health hazard even for someone not in my condition, but could have been deadly to me. Remodeling a basement at this stage of my illness is beyond what I can handle now, and I'm supposed to come up with the money to pay for the cleaning crews as well as the remodel. I'm already being pressured by the cleanup crew for payment after I was told by your people, who came out that day, not to worry about the cost. You need to make this right, as we are not at fault for this tragedy. Signed, Trish Crocker. While I'm up here, I'd also like to read my statement and then pass it down the line. As I said before, my name is Michael Hallman. My wife and I, Sherry, live at S-74W-13180 Cortlandt Lane. On Sunday, November 8th, my wife and I were in Phoenix, Arizona, visiting family. As empty nesters, when we travel, my brother-in-law will stay at our home while we're away. On that morning, my brother-in-law left for work and did not return until later that evening. However, while we were away on that afternoon, we got a call from one of our neighbors telling us there was substantial sewer backup that affected a number of homes in our neighborhood. That same neighbor had access to our home, and they said that there was a tremendous amount of damage in our finished basement, and the stench was overwhelming, to the point they couldn't stay in the home very long. And I'll cut, again, cut to some of the chase here. During the week that these repairs are being done, I had called the City of Muskego Sewer Department and talked to Scott Kozkowsky on two occasions. He was familiar with the incident, and more specifically, my home. He mentioned that I would need to file a claim with the city. They would review the claim once received. On November 18th, I sent an email to Alderman Wolf, asking him to come to the neighborhood to view the damages and discuss this with affected residents. He called me on November 20th. This was during COVID lockdown, and he suggested a better option would be for the affected homeowners to come to City Hall, and we could use a meeting group to discuss this with all involved. He suggested I email Scott Kozkowsky and Scott Krieger, the city engineer, to invite them to such a meeting. I sent that email on November 21st to all parties, asking for such a meeting. From that point forward, all correspondence from the city personnel came to a halt. On November 23rd, I received a call from Mayor Petfalski stating that in 99.8% of these cases, the city does not pay. He mentioned that he would have the city attorney send me an email outlining the procedures for filing a claim. That day, I did receive an email from Jeff Wartshol, city attorney, outlining those procedures. He indicated that from that point forward, he would be the contact person for the city. We were never given a chance to speak to anyone other than the attorney from that point forward. In fact, starting on December 1st, I tried on two occasions via email to open discussion with elected officials, and I got no response until I received an email from Alderman Madden responding, "I understand your frustration, but so you know, once an attorney has been brought into the mix, council communication all goes through the city attorney." And I filed my claim on March 3rd of this year for the damages to my home. I had to wait for contractors to come in to give me quotes, but I did file within the 120-day statutory limitation. But on March 22nd, and Sherry, if you could bring that up, I've got copies of the letter from Statewide Services, but I received this letter on March 22nd. The letter's dated, as you can see, March 18th of this year, stating that they are denying the claim. Then I find out the city took action and denied our claims at a Tuesday, March 23rd council meeting. But as you can see, the letter is dated Tuesday, Thursday, March 18th, but it was postmarked on the next page, Friday, March 19th, with a postmark coming from Minneapolis. I got my letter on Monday, the 22nd, yet the meeting for the city was the 23rd. Yet, the city effectively gives me less than 24 hours' notice before they take action on my claim, never allowing me to present my case. I've been told by the mayor that this is not the city's fault, but yet, even in the city's summary of the incident, which you'll see later, the cause was a manhole cover ring that clogged the system. These didn't get into the sewer system as a result of a resident. I was told the city was not negligent, but the fact is, raw sewage that caused almost $40,000 of damage from my home came from the city's sewer main backup. I can understand. If I have a sewer backup using my own septic system, the damage is on me, but I pay the city to provide this service. And in doing so, I would expect they provide safe and sanitary service. But ironically enough, I had a very similar situation take place in my home on November 25th of 2015, and I have video of this that's dated. A city water main broke in front of my home, caused property damage to retaining wall of my property. I have, as I said, video to verify this. Yet, the city had no problem fixing both my retaining wall and the washed-out soil damage. The city could have said then, like now, that wasn't our fault, but they didn't. They took responsibility for the damage caused by a system that we, as users, paid for. My question is, what's changed since then? I've been told by the mayor that cities don't pay for this damage, but that doesn't make it right. The cause of the sewer backup has been identified and documented by the sewer department. It was broken manhole cover rings installed by the city personnel or city contracted personnel. These rings are city-owned. According to the letter from Statewide Services, Wisconsin Statute 893.80 says, quote, "It affords the city discretionary immunity." According to dictionary.com, discretionary is defined as "subject to one's own discretion, or the power or right to decide to act according to one's own judgment. Freedom of judgment, freedom of choice. Therefore, you, as elected officials, are not required to exercise immunity. You, as elected officials, choose to." In closing, my question to you, as our elected officials, is this. We trust you to protect our property. We elect you to do that. Will you vote to reject any responsibility for damage that was done by city sewer backup, or will you use your legal discretion and vote to do the right thing, protecting your constituents' property? The choice is yours.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Hawke. Our address is West 131, South 7547, Chevyat Road. So, on Sunday morning, we discovered sewer water pooling in our basement. Within 30 minutes of being aware of the situation, a city worker, Todd Heinrich, was in front of our house explaining not to worry. The city has insurance for this. It was the main sewer line that was blocked, not our individual ladder lines to our house. He repeated multiple times that the city has insurance to cover this type of situation. That Sunday, I contacted our homeowner's insurance company to file our claim, called Servpro to begin cleanup immediately. Servpro was at our house by 3:00 PM and worked until 8:00 PM that night to remove the saturated carpet from our basement. Without that process being done that night, we would not have been able to sleep in our house due to the toxic smell from the raw sewage. On Monday morning, I called the City Hall to find out who I need to contact regarding filing a claim. Scott Kozkowsky responded very promptly to have all claim damages submitted to him. Servpro worked at our house, Sunday through Thursday, to completely gut our finished basement. The cleanup cost was $7,876 based upon the extensive damage. On January 12th, 2021, within the timeframe, I filed our notice of claim of damages for $19,924. It was not an extensive list. The majority of the labor to repair and restore our basement was completed by my husband and son. As a taxpayer of Muskego, I understand my responsibility. We pay our taxes, we pay our homeowner's insurance, and we maintain our home. We did have $10,000 of sewer backup coverage on our homeowner's policy, but our loss exceeded that. On Friday, March 19th, is when we received our letter from Statewide Services. It was very disappointing to find out that sewer backup claim was on an agenda on that following Tuesday without any notice to us. Based upon the formal report from Scott, which I just handed out that he had provided, stated that the broken manhole rings were the obstruction that got wedged in this manhole, caused buildup with grease and other solids to eventually block the pipe completely. The cause of our sewer backup does not appear to be any fault of the homeowners, but it also stated that only half the adjusting rings were found. I am concerned that this could happen again, especially with a high discharge area like Tudor Oaks flowing in our main line. Does this facility have a grinder for its output? Is that required? It appears from the emails received from Scott, which I also handed out, that inspections are done every five years. Does our situation require more frequent inspections, especially for the fact that more adjusting rings may cause future problems? I hope to never experience this type of situation again. I am sure most of you have never experienced this, as we had not before November 8th. I am asking the City of Muskego to share in the financial burden and reimburse us for the additional costs above our insurance coverage of $9,924. I would also like some assurance that this will not happen again, based upon the city's proper maintenance of our main sewer line, manhole covers, and streets. The manhole cover in front of our house is a couple inches below the grade of the street. I'm not a civil engineer, but I would think this should be level with the street like the other manhole covers on our street. I want to feel confident that the city is doing its part in preventing this type of incident, and that you, as elected officials, support the taxpayers. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
You guys just pass this and pass it back.
That picture was taken this morning. That manhole is about an inch and a half to two inches below the street level. Hi, my name is Michael Reitz, and my wife Jean, we built a property located at West 132, South 7547, Chevyat Road, and we have been a Muskego tax-paying resident at that location for the last 41 years. On Sunday morning, November 8th, I went down to the basement to do my normal workout, only to see three to five inches of raw sewage in our basement. We were horrified to see feces and toilet paper shooting up from the basement floor drain like a fountain. We called Russ, our plumber, who told us that massive quantities of sewage was not coming from our house, but could only be coming from the main sewer into our home. I think that is difficult for you to imagine the sheer volume of sewage that hundreds of Tudor Oaks residents generate on a Sunday morning. We called the Muskego non-emergency police number. Todd Hendricks was on call for the city and immediately came out to evaluate the situation. As soon as he pried open the manhole between Hawke's property and ours, he could see that the sewer main was blocked and told us that the blockage was caused by grease. And obviously, we asked, "How could somebody pour grease down drain?" We were shocked to learn that grease occurs by a byproduct of laundry soap and feces. The reason Todd immediately knew what caused the blockage was because Tudor Oaks had generated a grease plug in the past. It turned out that the grease plug was over four feet long and required a huge truck-mounted drill to bore through it. There were other items contributed to the massive blockage, including a broken concrete sewer ring and big chunks of asphalt. When we asked how these things got in the sewer, we were told then by Todd, had pried open the manhole between Hawke's and our house, he saw that the last repaving of Chevyat Road was done sloppy, and that there was excessive asphalt and tar allowed to drip down into the manhole. This led to big chunks of asphalt breaking off and becoming part of the blockage. The city crews worked for hours to get the flow, and present day and days after. We were told by the city workers several times that the city of Muskego had insurance, and it was their fault that this happened. We contracted Servpro on Sunday afternoon to help us dispose of the sewage contaminated belongings and disinfect our basement. We also reported this incident to our insurance company on Saturday, Sunday afternoon. The next day, Monday, 11:19, we were informed by our insurance company that we only had water damage insurance, and we did not have sewer damage rider. We received the letter that everyone's talking about from Statewide, and they have a quote in there for the reason of further denial, that the city had no prior notice that the unforeseen clog existed, thus were unable to take preventive measures. The city would not be liable unless the staff knew or should have known about a clog, and had adequate time to correct the problem prior to the loss. It is our contention that the city is indeed liable because the Department of Public Works should have been inspecting the sewer lines between Tudor Oaks and the lift station on a regular basis, because they knew that Tudor Oaks had clogged the sewer with grease before. If the city had inspected this four-block-long stretch on a regular basis, they not only would have seen the grease clog before it completely obstructed the sewer line, but they would have also seen the damaged manhole cover ring and shoddy repaving of Chevyat Road. In summary, we did not in any way contribute to the blockage that caused so much destruction, so the city should have anticipated that Tudor Oaks would need to monitor or force Tudor Oaks to install a grinder to prevent a recurrence, and we are requesting reimbursement of $10,133 or possibly a tax credit. But we believe that something needs to be, some kind of compromise needs to happen. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
My name is Mike Hawke. You've heard from my wife. I'm reading on behalf of my neighbor, Richard Randa, West 131, South 7576, Chevyat Road, who could not be here. Good afternoon, council members. I am here to address you about the sewer backup that occurred on November 8th, 2020, to certain residents of Chevyat and Oxford Court. Carpeting in some boxes of miscellaneous items were destroyed. Sent an invoice to the City of Muskego for $793.40, which included $417.31 to replace in carpeting, $13.59 for disinfectant, and 14.5 hours of my labor at $25 per hour. Received a letter from Statewide Services denying my claim on March 15th, 2021, I feel that the liability for this backup lies with the City of Muskego because I was, it was discovered that parts of a cast iron manhole adjusting ring was found in the sewer. The city, or a vendor that the city contracted with, replaced this manhole adjusting. However, whoever did the work did not do a very good job. It is easy to place the pieces to form a full ring, assuring that all the pieces were removed. This was not done. Also, how does a bath towel get into the sewer main? None of the residential customers could be responsible for this. Could it be Tudor Oaks? Aren't they supposed to have a grinder in operation to grind their sewage prior to discharge? I have owned homes for over 50 years and never experienced a backup. I request that the city reevaluate their decision to deny the seven residents' claims. Richard Randa.
Good evening. My name is Matthew McCarrill. I'm joined by my wife Danielle. Our address is S-75W-13130, Oxford Court, around the corner from these folks. I have two statements tonight. I'll start with the one from my family. On November 8th, at approximately 11:00 in the morning, raw sewage started coming up at a rate of 10 to 15 gallons per minute in our basement. Our family proceeded to fight it by sweeping the feces and the sewage into our sump pump crock and stuffing bed sheets into the pipe. My wife called the Public Works Department right away. In fact, she was the second caller to log a notification of the issue. This greatly reduced the volume filling up our finished basement. However, our carpet, shelving, and some drywall were ruined. That same day, the city worker Todd Heinrich responded and unclogged the blockage. Going above and beyond the call of duty, Todd went door-to-door and explained that there were Tudor Oaks branded towels and pieces of drain extensions in the line. Further, he explained that the city has insurance and to send all claims to them. He did this because he must have felt the city was responsible. That same day, at 1:42 PM, I emailed Scott Kozkowsky, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce his last name, Scott K., at Public Works, notifying him that this incident affected our home. Our family continued cleaning, removing carpet, et cetera. We also did the same for our neighbor, Trish Crocker, who was the first resident mentioned. The next morning, Scott responded right away to my email and said, "For now, send any claims you have through me. I will get them to the correct person at City Hall, who will pass them to our insurance carrier. I would suggest that you also file a claim with your own insurance company and let the insurance company sort it out. Pictures and itemized losses are best," end quote. Again, this felt like the city was indicating responsibility and ownership of the problem. That same day, our insurance agent, Joe Bono, from State Farm, emailed Scott K. at 9:51 AM. His email stated, "Scott, good morning. If you could reply all back to myself and the McCarrills, with the City Hall contact, insurance company, and policy number, we would appreciate it. The City of Muskego's liability policy should pay for this without my clients needing to put a claim through on their personal policy and paying a deductible," end quote. There was no response to that email. On November 9th and 10th, the City of Muskego Sewer Department sent multiple assets and employees to clean the line very extensively. It took them over two days to make it right. This was greatly appreciated by my family, but more importantly, it also indicates that this is their responsibility. Again, the response was quick and appreciated. On November 22nd, our insurance agent, Joe Bono, emailed Scott again and said, quote, "Scott, I am following up again. Please see my original email from November 9th. I have yet to receive a reply from you." This email was also never acknowledged or responded to. Fast forward to December 28th. We came to this very building. We did what we do every year. We paid our property taxes. At the same time, in December of last year, we delivered our itemized claim. To be clear, we had already filed a claim with our insurance agent. Because of the complete lack of response to our insurance agent, we had to file a claim. In our claim with the City of Muskego, we are seeking reimbursement for the deductible, only the deductible. January 28th of this year, we followed up with Scott K., knowing claims take time, but wanting to remain on the radar. Scott responded promptly. The claims are in the hands of the insurance investigator. Once they have the info in their hands, we usually don't hear from them again until they send a recommendation to the council. According to the city attorney, they have 120 days from receiving the claim to send a recommendation to the council. Hopefully, they don't take that long. Again, a prompt response. Fast forward to March 17th. We get a letter that stated March 15th from Statewide Services indicating the claim is denied. March 29th, we receive a letter from the City of Muskego, notice of disallowance of claim from the City of Muskego. On April 18th, we sent our intention to speak to the council, and in that notice, we, as a group, said, "Our collective opinion is that this is not exclusively any one party's responsibility." So enough of my timeline. I'm going to bring it home. On behalf of my family, I shared our timeline with you today because I do not consider this to be the City of Muskego's 100% responsibility exclusively. As good-standing citizens of Muskego, we clearly understand we have a collective responsibility to pay our taxes, to be involved in our community schools, churches, and charitable organizations. We also understand the need to have property insurance, and this incident confirms the need to have supplemental basement and sewer backup policies. At my home, we did not wait for the city to fix our damages. We filed a claim immediately with our insurance carrier. We did most of the work and repairs ourselves because there was no sign the city was even willing to communicate with our insurance carrier. We took action at every step because we understand we have a responsibility to do so. On November 8th, we took action to fight the backup. We took action to notify the city of the backup. We filed a claim with our carrier, and we took action to help our immediate neighbors clean up. On December 28th, we took action by filing the claim as we also under- On December 28th, we took action by filing the claim as we also understand there is a process to work through. On January 28th, we took action again by following up. Simply put, we did not wait for anyone to do anything for us. We took the bull by the horns and took the needed actions to make our homes whole again. This is also true of the Public Works Department. Their response was great. It was the communications outside of that that were not. It is our belief today that Tudor Oaks needs to install a grinder pump as this would be required if they were building the building today. It is also our belief that the ci-, the city should identify this area for increase in more frequent maintenance visits. This is known as an FVA in the sewer and drain business. Further, the City of Muskego should consider financial compensations to these homes to assist us as good standing taxpaying citizens with costs that exceeded coverage. Specifically, in our case, we seek reimbursement of our deductible. To be clear, for my family, this is $3,940.
Thank you.
While I'm up here, I'm gonna be reading on behalf of Christopher and Kristen Dibb. Their address is W 131 S 7534, Chevyat Road. Please accept my apologies for not being able to be there in person today and to meet you and present our case with our neighbors. I live on W 131 S 7534 Chevyat Road in the City of Muskego with my wife, Kristen Dibb, and our six kids. On Sunday, November 8th, 2020, we were driving back from a soccer tournament in St. Louis, Missouri. When we arrived home late in the afternoon, we found three inches of standing wa-, standing sewage water in our basement. Everything in our basement was a loss. To save time, I will list some of the important items that were, that were lost. We lost our kids' toys and storybooks that were stored in our children's playroom. In our storage area, we lost the baby crib bedroom set and baby clothes we intended to use for our newest son, who was born this January. We also lost my oldest daughter's bedroom set and clothes, whose bedroom was in the basement. Another big item that was lost was two couches, end tables, and area rugs that were used in our entertainment room. The largest item that was destroyed by the city's sewage line was our boiler, our house's main source of heat. The sewage damaged our house boiler and a new boiler had to be installed. Due this, due to the smell, we were unable to live in our house for two days while Surf Pro cleaned the sewage smell out of the house. Due to the damage and the smell, Surf Pro remained cleaning for five days. I was unable to measure the amount of electricity that was used to heat our home with space heaters and to keep the 30 fans from Surf Pro to dry out the basement. Our home insurance policy only covered $7,500 worth of damage, damages. The total loss of material goods, our boiler, and Surf Pro's cleaning service far exceeded what our insurance covered. The grand total amounted to a loss of $20,000 due to the backed up city sewage line. We believe this could have been caught by yearly inspections, and our hope is that you would put yourselves in our shoes and handle this the same way as if it was your house and your neighborhood affected. Sincerely, Christopher and Kristen, Kristen Dibb. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before you speak, how many more people are?
Just me, and I'll be short.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm not reading my book, just so you know. I'm Joan Hawley. I live in S 75 W 13139 Oxford Court. I did not have damages because I do have a lift pump. My credentials are, I'm a professional oper-, professional engineer registered in the state of Wisconsin, Michigan, and Washington. I am also a certified sanitary sewer operator for the United States. I have worked over professionally 30 years in collection systems and sanitary sewers. So my point is more of a broad of what it is on the professional living, the day in, day out. I address and work with communities to have a proactive preventive maintenance cleaning programs. Every single community in the United States has what we call a frequently visited area. That means an area like Tudor Oaks, hospitals, restaurants that discharge grease, we call them frequently visited. So normally you have a preventive maintenance schedule for cleaning, about three to five years, the industry recommends that. The City of Muskego does that. But you're also gonna have to do some areas. I guarantee you, every community has these frequently visited areas. And even without looking at it, not knowing all the sewer system in Muskego, I would know, I'd pick Tudor Oaks as being a representative that could discharge things that go down. Waukesha, the City of Waukesha required the hospital to put it. Glendale, the City of Glendale requires, they, they go to Bay Shore Mall every year on a regular basis to clean because they're suspecting in grease. So that's my first thing. So the Statewide Service, no prior notice that the unforeseenable clog, I would disagree on that statement, that they probably would see that there are certain areas that they're gonna have to clean more frequently. And what contributes to it? A four foot long clog? They'll tell you it takes a long time to be able to do that. Second of all, 99% of the problems are typically, they are the homeowners. It's your lateral that backs up. This is clearly a case where the sanitary sewer from the public was plugged from the city. Not from the city, but from, from mechanism, whether you did it or not. And I really feel that the city needs to take what has been said before and look at the preventive maintenance program, maybe consider a grinder pump to be put at Tudor Oaks. There's no way you can stop people from throwing things down. The three things that only should be down in sewers is a three piece, and nothing else should go down. Flushable wipes are not flushable. So that's what I'd like to say, and I hope you, I agree with everybody here, and I hope you really consider their claim because it is a city responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, first off, I'm just gonna say quickly, what happened to you guys is my worst nightmare. I understand, I mean, I haven't gone through this, but I understand the, you know, how horrible that would be to come through. That doesn't, you know, that's just my own personal feeling. I'm sure everyone up here would, would feel the same way. We'll have discussions on this, however, I am running into a timeframe right now because we're over on time from where I thought this would go. I have to have a public hearing that's been noticed for 6 o'clock. We're gonna have that public hearing on a separate issue, and then we'll come back. So I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, we'll go to our public hearing, have that, adjourn that meeting, come back to your discussion, but you're gonna have to go on pause for a minute because there's timeframes I have to meet by law. So just so you understand, I, I don't like bouncing around like this, but I have to, so we're here. So that being said, um, I'm, do I need a motion or can I just put, put us in recess?
You can put us in recess.
Yeah, so that being said, I'm putting the committee, the whole meeting in recess at 6:14 PM. I am reconvening the committee, the whole at nine, at 6:20 PM. All right. Anyone wanna? We're back at the cow. Any comments? Anyone wanna say anything?
Can someone give us a, I'm sorry. Can someone give us a synopsis of Scott Kozlowski's comments?
Let me see if I can get, where did Scott go? Can you get him in? Let's get Scott back in here.
Well, here's a, a letter that came out, right? Did you see that?
Oh, that was a letter from, that was provided that went from Scott to Jeff. Yeah, so that's your synopsis.
That would be kind of right.
So the lines were videoed in 2016 and showed the lines were clear?
But it doesn't show a record. The other, the other ones show records. That just has a, a video, right?
Sorry about that. Talking to other people.
That's fine.
Flats.
Sure.
Okay. You wanna know about the backup? Just what happened? Okay. So summarizing and everything like that, there was an obstruction. Again, I apologize, it's, no one wants to deal with this stuff. When the workers are there, they're just trying to get this thing cleaned out, get it back going. What was determined was a ring caused the blockage. Okay. Ring broke. Half the ring got in there. It wedges in there. Once it starts wedging into a pipe, things start collecting on it. It's simple. It, it's like a stone or a rock. Next thing you know, you get paper towel, you got anything like toilet paper, it starts building up, building up, building up, building up. That's what caused the obstruction. All right? That's it. It, it's just this ring. We can't find half of the ring. We found half of the ring. The other half is not in there. We don't know where it is. We don't think it's in the line. We think it, it's maybe didn't go down there when it breaks. Half of it maybe broke up on top, but the other half they found in the line. That ring, once it happens, it starts just causing things to back up. Simple is, and a good example, City Hall here, we had a backup. What happened was someone put a torpedo, uh, kinda measure like this big, got into a line, it jammed in the line, and next thing you know, it caused paper towel, toilet paper, everything got in it. Next thing you know, the whole thing just clogs up. That's what caused the obstruction. This metal ring, and half of it went in there, and, you know, these pipes, it doesn't take much, once you start, they get wedged, then all of a sudden, everything gets stuck behind it. That was it.
Which way does the sewage flow in that area on?
It goes down and then goes?
Does it go east or go, does it go west?
West. Yeah, yep, that's where it goes. So which way?
North and west.
North and west, yep. But that was it. That was the obstruction. I just checked with Scott, there's no towels found. We didn't find any towels. It was just, workers are given any ideas of grease towels when, when they're trying to fix it up, but no towels were found. It was, the, the thing that was found was this adjustment ring. That's what was determined that caused the obstruction. And that's the memo that Scott wrote and then passed on to our State Farm or, or insurance person.
Is it uncommon, once we find something like this, a backup, that we, it's all men on deck?
Yes. As soon as, any type of, we, we, we are, we are going to, one, where's the other part of this ring in this case? Or we are going to camera everything that we can and make sure that there's no other issues. You know, um, let's say it determines that we had some other type of failure, we'll go around checking all the lines, just making sure in that area that, um, it's all, you know, we don't want this to happen again. We, we, you know, we check these every sort of years. This could happen where we checked it, just trying to give you an idea, you check it, we leave the spot, one minute later, this could break. I, I, there's, there's no timeframe for some of this stuff. I, I, you know, it's not like we know.
Try, hey, try to adjust the council, I'm sorry. Hang on. Address the council.
Yeah, sorry. But again, we, you know, you could, we could camera something for five years, perfect, perfect, perfect. We leave one minute later, it breaks.
Does this, does this area have a history of sewer backups?
Not in, from talking with Scott, we hadn't had a problem, he just talked to me for Tudor Oaks in 15 years.
Well, we, we have one person that lived there 41 years, and you've seen anything in 41?
Well, we were told, we were told by Todd that came out to do the, that he had been there before for a grease builder.
Well, we might have.
But there was no backup there 41 years? And then you were out there, you said 29 years? And you've never seen anything? So I'm just, I'm just giving you a timeline.
Yeah, I mean.
We've never had sewer in the basement for 41.
So, so that's, that's a good, really good history, just to let everyone know. That's a really good history that for 41 years, we had nothing. Like I said, Scott said we have never had a problem for Tudor Oaks in the last 15 years.
Are there other areas in the city that we do have more of problem areas that we are aware of that we check on a more regular basis, or is it a, a, a simple?
For example, we try to camera everything every five years throughout the whole committee. One of them that we just recently, that we're watching a little bit, new subdivision, Waters of Dunoon, not enough people on a grinder pump line. We saw that there was a little bit of backup, so we are just watching it as more houses come online, and that is one of our concerns. These things happen, and once we understand what they are, we just do keep a watch on, on one of the areas. Tudor Oaks is not one of them. Anywhere around that area is not one of them. I just checked with Scott, too, so.
Before you came to the City of Muskego, did you work with any other municipalities in their utilities?
Um, I did work a little bit with the DOT and the municipalities. I did more of storm sewer, not as much water design and sanitary, so.
I'm just trying to see if you, if our maintenance is any different than what other communities do.
You know, we follow the guidelines, we have our own camera truck, we do a lot of our own maintenance. Um, I'm sure different communities have, you know, if you have more staff, you have more time to camera. We have a staff, we camera for the amount of lines that we have. But.
What, what do we do when, I guess, how do we do the inspections when there's been new construction?
How would you do new construction inspection? Okay, so, first thing that we do.
Well, I'm not talking about a new house, I'm talking about, you know, putting new lines in.
Yes.
Because I believe in that area, between Tudor Oaks and the school, there was all new stuff put in, right?
So that's a little different. It's a grinder pump, which means grinder pump is forced.
Yeah, but we had, but we had all the pipes go in, we had the fire hydrant, we had.
But we don't have, how a typical subdivision would be this. Okay, for example, uh, typical subdivision, they go and lay out all their main line. After, first they get approved design plans by a PE engineering. We approve them, they lay all the lines, we have an inspector that's laying all the lines. One of the last things then we do for a sanitary sewer is then we clean the lines, and we camera the lines, and we make sure everything works okay before we even dedicate the lines to us, okay? Then we have a one-year warranty. And even with that one-year warranty, now what we're even doing is an extra step is, before we even have the one-year warranty done, we are cameraing the lines again one more time to make sure that there's nothing in them. So that kinda gives you an idea.
So yeah, it gives me an idea, but that's a subdivision. I'm talking about a longer stretch of just pipes and things going in, like, because we had the school construction, and we also had, we have Tudor Oaks over there, right? Was there, there was, there was activity going on with construction with water, right? I mean, that's all new stuff that hasn't been there in 41 or 29 or whatever year you wanna say.
But that's, that's water main. I mean, when we did the school, it was water main. We have some sanitary there, but when we look at stuff and we do studies.
I know, but the water has to go somewhere from that main.
The school, the school goes the opposite way, though.
Okay.
Just to let, you know, the school does not go.
It's not part of this line.
It does not go to that line. So that, I'm, I'm just wanna make sure that you understand.
No, that's good, that's why I'm asking you questions.
Yeah, nope, nope. School goes the other way for the sanitary, but we do a thorough check of doing it, and our camera truck's really good of checking the lines.
So one of the points that been brought up was Tudor Oaks having grease problems in the past.
15 minutes, 15 years ago, Scott said, was the last time he's ever been called all about there for their grease trap. But please remember, this obstruction was because of that ring, okay?
But if they found, they found towels with Tudor Oaks wording on it?
No towels. I just talked to Scott, we never found towels or anything like that.
I think someone, someone mentioned it, right? They went door to door, I understand.
So we're told, I can tell you right now, I checked with Scott, there's no towels that were found, nothing like that. Okay? Grease, though, when you have an obstruction, grease starts building up, thing starts clogging up, that's kinda like one of the things.
Okay, let me ask you another question then. As far as the videotaping, when they go out there to clear the lines, are they videotaping then?
Yeah.
So then they would, they would show that if there was towels in there?
Yeah, we, I can, we can get videotapes of, of some of the clean lines.
No, not clean, but before, the flawed lines.
Yeah, because we would find them, we would push them down into a manhole, and then you had to empty it out of the manhole. Scott said there was no towels that was ever found during it. We found the ring. That was, that's what they found.
Okay, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just looking off my notes here. If nobody else had any other questions, I have a couple, a couple of questions.
John does, one moment. One, I'm sorry, wait, actually, right now, we're gonna talk. Okay, so let us get our discussions and then.
Just for the help of the council, and how often do we run into and what kind of debris have we ever had like this ring that fell in, and how could this ring fall in?
Okay. So we've run into everything that can fall into a sanitary sewer line. When there was vents on it, you could get sticks, you could get rocks. We've also run into concrete recently, pebbles, you're building a house, a foundation, you have a floor drain in your house, if you don't cover that floor drain from concrete, you get in the lateral, then it can get into the main. Those are some of the things that, scenarios that has happened to us recently. How this ring, and one of the things, is why we checked with the EPW is, does our snowplow hit it? If our snowplow hit this ring, one, you would feel it for sure, because it would take off, off the plow on it, but then when it cracked it and broke it, half of it went down into the manhole. That's what we figured happened. Somehow this broke, and half of it went down in the manhole. The other half didn't, and it's up on top, or whoever did might have break it, grabbed it, and threw it in their truck and left. These are only possible scenarios of what could have happened or ideas that we've thought of. You could, you could take a, someone could be doing a landscaping work and have a skid loader and hit it, this thing, and, and could break it. A DPW could have a snowplow, it could hit this, hit this manhole, crack that ring and, and break it.
Where, where was the broken manhole? I, I don't even know. Do we know where it was?
Yes. Sounds shitty, right?
Yeah, sir, yeah, sir, can you just let her?
Yeah, so we, we, again, we found the, you know, we found the, once you. Yeah, so we, we, again, we found the ring, you know, we found the, once you find it, you start working your way back and we, we found it. So, but again, we only found half the ring.
Yep, so do we have an estimate how long that was in there before the disaster came?
No, we do not. So that's the thing, it could be been in there for a year. And as long as everything passed by, it could have been fine. It's just that when it moved down, got caught, then it starts building up stuff.
So, so the ring is not broke on top, it broke underneath, so you wouldn't be able to see it from the street?
The ring broke, so half of that went in, half of it we can't find. Again, you're asking me.
But I mean, but I'm saying you can't physically, you, can you see it from the street?
Well, yeah, you, you, well, you.
Or you have to look for it.
Yeah, and then half of it could have been out and you take half of the ring and it could have been gone. We don't know. We only could find half the ring.
Okay, I'm just still trying to picture how, I mean, to me, if you see something missing on the street, you would know it's missing.
Yeah, it's not as clear as like, like a manhole cover. Okay, it's not driving by and like, okay, I see a manhole cover missing. Got it, does that make sense? Or I see.
It's not necessarily an immediate cause and effect either.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, cause I know we have trucks driving around looking for this stuff.
Correct, correct, we look for stuff all the time. Yeah, exactly right. If you're looking for the fact that, is it blatantly obvious it's taking a manhole cover? No, it's not, so.
One moment, um, did you have a question?
No.
No, okay.
Was there anything else that you?
Yeah, I was just trying to pursue a little bit to understand how often we run into this kind of disaster.
I have not heard of another backup from a ring. I've been here four years and I, I don't think Scott has one where, where rings get damaged, but we've never had a backup from a ring.
How often do we have backups in the city overall?
Or any other, yeah, any other causes.
Any type of cause? Once a year, once every two years, once?
Well, recently, we had the one in Lake Forest this fall.
Um, oh, we had the hundred year rains three times in 10 years.
Rainstorms, um, I would say besides that one, I think we had one, uh, three now in the four years that I've been here. If I remember right.
So fairly infrequently.
Yeah, yes, this does not happen often. Our system is very fairly new. We are a very new community. We have a lot of PVC pipe. We don't have a lot of, um, old pipes in our system.
And I would guess that each incident that we've had, any, anything similar to it has all been unique. Each one is.
Yeah, I think the one we had in Lake Forest was just age.
There was age.
Age, a system of 30 years old.
So it's not a common thing to at all that we've, we've dealt with?
No.
Jeff, I have a question for you. Um, going to liability, um, if a, say if a pothole forms in a road, I drive over it and I damage my tire. And the city's not, not, hadn't been notified of that potholes, is the city liable for that damage to the tire?
No, the only time the city's liable is if we knew of something and we didn't fix it. So if that pothole gets called in and we know about it.
Ignore it.
And we ignore it. Normally you have to fix it within a reasonable amount of time. So if we knew about something and we didn't fix it, by all means, we're liable. If we don't know about anything, um, we're not liable.
Would this be a similar type situation?
This situation?
Yes.
Ye- yes, if we knew about the ring that was broken and was in there, um, and we didn't do anything to remedy it, yes, that would be liability there. If we don't know about it, um, as the insurance company is saying, that's what their point is, that we didn't know about it and there's, so there wouldn't be any liability.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, first of all, I, I definitely want to, um, thank the city. It sounds like they, they got out there properly after the fact, you know? So it sounds like we, we do what we're supposed to do, uh, as far as cleaning up. Um, so, you know, I appreciate that. And I also want to, uh, say thanks that we, we finally got back on track and had the people come in and, and speak their, their words of, of, uh, of what they should have been given a chance for in the beginning. So I'm glad we, we corrected that part of it, so I want to say that. But I do, um, want to make a couple of comments. Um, I, I, I see the grinder word came up. I don't know what, if we're looking at doing anything in that area of Tudor Oaks deserves anything like that? You know, do we, should we be doing something like that?
There's, again, we have not had an issue with 15 years with Tudor, Tudor Oaks or anything. If you have a grinder, all you're gonna what? Do grind up grease into smaller parts, there's.
Well, I understand that, but my point.
I'm just saying that, I just want to make sure it clear that that, anything with Tudor, nothing with Tudor Oaks or grease, it was the ring that caused this backup. I just want to make sure that it's.
But, but this has just come up, so I'm just wanting to bring it up that, that the point is that Tudor Oaks has had construction out there in 15, in the last 15 years. So I mean, they're doing more than what they used to do. Uh, they're a lot bigger facility, isn't it? So there's concerns of, of, uh, you know, extra sewage in the area. So I don't know if we should be looking at that as a whole. Um, the word system areas, that kind of goes the same thing. I think, uh, the engineer brought that up. Um, we should probably be looking at, at system areas if we don't do that as a plan for water. I mean, I, I, I don't know, I'm not a water engineer, I'm just bringing out points here. Um, the other thing that, that caught my mind on here, or caught my attention on here is that, um, you know, we're doing a five-year inspection and we're a growing, growing community. Maybe we need to, uh, do inspections sooner. Uh, I don't know, again, if that's feasible or how we're gonna do that, if we should look at that. But the, the last big comment I have is the concerns I had is that asphalt from, uh, understanding the road wasn't done properly, um, on Cheviot, uh, when it was installed, that it was, somebody inspected it and mentioned the word. I think you brought that up. Um, there was a lot of asphalt down there and that creates problems as well. So that's where I came in. What do we do when we put a new road in? Like I asked about when we put the water lines in, um, how do we inspect the sewers after that? If we, if we do roadwork on there, should we be inspecting afterwards? I mean, we, we put asphalt down, I don't know, they redo the road or just resurfaced it? Or I don't know what they did, but should we be checking the lines after that?
We, again, usually in the subdivision when it's brand new.
Well, I'm talking about this subdivision existing. In, in this instance here, the word was asphalt was falling down there, that, that one of the workers mentioned.
Again, I can check with Scott, the last thing we've found was ring.
That was not part of the report.
No, it's not part of the report, no towels, no asphalt.
But see, that's why we have them come in and, and, and give their impressions of what's going on, um, because they were there on the spot and they all pretty much had the same story. Somebody went door to door and told them there was towels down there, there was asphalt down there, there was a manhole cover or a piece of a cover or whatever down there. So I'm just trying to piece this all together, that what are we doing for inspections after we do asphalt on a road?
So when we, and do we do an I and I, when we resurface a road?
We should be videotaping afterwards.
Well, let me go through the questions. When we go, when we resurface a road and the manhole covers are, or the manholes are replaced, do we go back and check on our I and I on it?
Um.
We make sure they're sealed, don't we?
We do make sure they're sealed, but in most cases, when you do a resurface of the road, there should be no way that asphalt should get down there. It's not like we take the manhole covers off.
But we do a visual inspection for I and I.
And we also have inspectors out there that would indicate, hey, by the way.
We're doing it above ground, a visual inspection.
Correct, cause.
But this was below ground, see, that's my point. You know, they're all coming back with the same story. Either they all got together and wrote that story or they all heard the same thing.
But this wasn't a new road.
I know, but they're talking about that when it happened, that somebody did the road wrong and it was.
When was that road done?
Cheviot?
I mean, it's been a decade.
No, they did the resurfacing of Cheviot.
A year or two?
Two, three, four, four, four or five years ago.
Okay.
Four or five years ago, that's.
2010, but I could be wrong.
It was four or five years ago, but, but again.
When was the last inspection?
Yeah.
It was after the last inspection?
It was about the same time, but i- in that case, if there was asphalt or something significant in there, we would have probably seen a backup.
Right.
Probably, no offense, before this ring broke, there would have been a backup. If, if there was something.
Or it helped create the backup by adding to it. So that's, that's a tough question.
If it's four or five years ago, I'm guessing anything in that pipe is long gone.
And it would have made our, it would have made our inspections cycle, which is every five years at minimum.
Well, unless it was done before the road inspection, the video was done before.
Anything that happened, anything that was in the pipes that's four or five years ago.
I'm just trying to answer their questions.
I, I know, but I'm just saying that if that road was done four or five years ago and anything in that pipe, that's, that's long gone. I mean, it, anything you have got to understand is, if that ring, and probably our impression, is probably within the last year that broke. So you're only talking whatever in the last year that that probably collected stuff. Or maybe even just this last summer. And that's it. There's, anything beforehand does not matter, cause it's going through. It's that ring that catches and then it starts building all that stuff up there.
If they said that there was asphalt down there because of the job, the asphalt was down there before the ring. And, and that's what I'm hearing and that's what I'm trying to bring up. You say that got washed down, but it might not have got washed down because the maintenance videotape could have happened before that road was done.
But it's not in the report and we have, our, our employees.
Well, the towels aren't in the report either.
Let me finish my point. And our employees have no, I mean, if there was these, the towels or the, or the asphalt on, they have no reason not to put it in the report. There's no benefit for us either way, cause all that would be is, okay, that caused it.
No, I understand that, I agree.
It's, even if that were true, it still doesn't add liability to the city onto it. So it would be in the report if it was actually there.
But I'm just trying to figure out, I'm just trying to answer their questions again, because they all had this, the, the story of somebody went door to door and that's concerning to me, that if someone goes door to door and it doesn't make the report, why did it not make the report?
That would be, that would be a good question. That would be a good question, I, and I, and.
You know, I gotta go by the report and I gotta go by them, right?
It wouldn't change the outcome, so I guess why would they omit it?
Well, I understand that, but I'm still trying to, I, I wish it was in there, you know what I'm saying?
I, I, if it were true, yeah.
To me, just, I don't, you know, it's concerning that, you know, I mean, it's just like, not having him here at the last meeting was concerning and, and this is concerning, you know?
But barring evidence, we have to go after what's in the report.
Please be aware, we have the video once, like they said, that we spend times out there, just to let everyone know. We then videotape, jet vac, everything, when we're pushing a lot of water. And then we will go look in the manholes. We found no rags, no mention of asphalt, we found this ring. That's what we found. When we, when we jet it through and we go to that manhole and we start looking up, once we find those, that's the evidence that we found that caused this blockage. So I just want to be clear about that.
I got one last comment.
Yeah.
Um, we gotta go by the report, but we're also gotta go by what the people say. We always listen to the people and that's why we're elected to listen to the people. So reports are good, but reports are only good by what is put into the report. You know, so, you know, it's just like a software program. It's only as good as what you put into the program.
But there's video evidence is my point. So, and, and I'm not sure if you're understanding.
Well, that's what I asked before.
And, and I'm not sure if you understand what, what Scott's saying. Okay, so you have a pipe and the clog was in the pipe and they jetted it out. So the solids will collect in the manhole, the, the, all the, excuse my language, crap and water and everything else. The, the non-solids flow through and get pushed out and, and go through the sewer system as supposed to. The thing that was causing the clog was since jetted, will deposit itself in, in the, in the, in the catch basin of the man, manhole area. So there's video evidence and once they piped it, once they ran the video, anything that was in there is there. It's either there or it's not.
So is it video of what was caught in there or video of it actually being cleaned out?
It's, it's. You can go afterwards or beforehand, but first you jet it all out and then you take a video and you like check the line and make sure.
First you solve the problem.
First you shoot everything out, then you do a video of checking everything as it's going through. Then you open a manhole to check that. So, no, no, if you would have found rags, they would have been down in a manhole. We would have had a manhole, we would have had a raise.
There's not a possibility they could have been jetted out.
No, cause you would jet it into the manhole. That's, and then, and then, you know what else? If the, if there was probably rags, it would probably cause another blockage and we'd be doing this again. We found an adjustable ring.
But even if we did find all this stuff, even if all that was in there, it doesn't change our conversation today. So I, I, I just want to make that clear. It's just, it may be a different cause of what caused the backup. It doesn't change what our responsibility is for the whole utility, all the utility users. It's not a city, and, and I just want to be clear, there's a difference between the city and the sewer utility. Everyone in the city pays taxes. This is, if, if there was liability here, it'd come out of the sewer utility, which is a much smaller subset, cause not everyone has sewer, um, service in Meskego. So that's where the liability, it's a sewer utility backup difference. It's a different entity altogether. Not that that really means anything to you, especially when you got, you know, six inches of junk in your basement. You don't really care, you just want it taken care of and made, made whole. I get that. I'm just trying to clarify this.
More follow-up? Um, and regards to inspections and or, do those basins get cleaned regularly too?
Um, I think when we do our inspection, if we find stuff with a camera, then we're gonna clean it for sure.
I mean, in general, in the city, are we?
I don't, I would have to ship a Scott of like what our maintenance plan is if we pop every manhole. Every five years and clean up. You gotta understand too, once you start doing confined spaces, that's three, you know, you have to have a couple of people to go in there and clean it.
I see our trucks out there and I wondered, uh, uh, storm sewers or the, uh, sanitary sewers, that they have to.
Well, the white, the white.
I know they have to clean from storm sewers right along, but.
We clean the storm sewers out a lot, cause we want to make sure that they're, we clean them usually all the time right before rain or whatever, doing it. But once you start getting to a sewer and the manhole, you start doing confined spaces. So now it's a whole different game of doing it, because once you clean that out, you gotta have a couple of guys there and, and follow the correct rules.
So that kind of cleaning usually is done when we find something.
Correct, correct.
All right, then, um, do we have a, an established, uh, frequently, uh, visited, uh, area? Type of thing in this city?
The one I know right away, like we just talked about is the Waters of the Noon. And, and why I know that is just real recent. And we've checked on it and we found that there's no issue. So instead of checking that on a monthly, we're moving it to quarterly to check on it. So when we find an issue or we hear an issue, we go and check on it right away. If there's another issue, for example, um, there was another subdivision that we found that we had some concrete in it I was talking about. I told the developer right away, start talking to all the home builders. Make sure that you guys check your own private laterals, cause we found concrete. And two, we're still under warranty here, so go get that cleaned out for us ASAP. So that's kind of things that we do as a, be proactive.
And I should clarify that when, you know, that frequently watched area.
Mm-hmm.
Really doesn't exist, because if there's a problem area, we, we fix it. We redesign it, we make our capacity correct. That's, the only reason you would be having that is if there's a design flaw somewhere.
Yeah, my, my point is that we haven't had, uh, anything leading up to this that suggests that we got a problem.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. Um, however, this, uh, this ring was down line, how far where it was found?
It was right on the same street you said, right?
Yeah, I think it was one or two manholes down. I, I don't know exactly.
So it had actually moved through the line some before it clogged?
Usually what happens is most things will move through a line and then all of a sudden, it gets wedged and then, then you're done. So like I was saying, it could be, that could have happened last summer. This didn't happen till, you know, a couple of months later. If it's still flowing and everything starts flowing past it, you're fine. As soon as it gets blocked, then it starts building up and then cause all the, the sewage backup.
So I guess I want to get us all refocused a little bit.
That's okay. I just needed to follow up.
Cause doesn't matter. It really doesn't unless the, the cause, there was our, if, if we were negligent in doing something, if you believe we were negligent in doing something, then we should have a conversation about that. But how it got there at this point is kind of irrelevant from where our discussions are going tonight. So.
Well, I have, unless somebody else has something, I have one thing to say. Um, the insurance company is a recommendation. So it doesn't make it irrelevant. Uh, the people here have come forward with their version compared to the insurance company version. And the, uh, report, which seems a different a little bit. Uh, the insurance company, of course, is gonna, is gonna look at, uh, try to be more factual and look at if it, if it was a cause by the city or not from based on what was given to them. Uh, but, uh, they didn't hear the side that we just heard today. So I would look at the recommendation. I guess what we, you know, we're beating this to death here. Um, the, the conversation is to either vote to move it up to council for reconsideration. Is that right?
No, um, it's just a discussion. So here's your options. Here are your options. So we're having it at a call for one. So these people can speak. Um, and we could have a dialogue with them on it. Two, um, we can have the discussion now if you want of, if there's any interest of reconsidering it. Now, that being said, there's only three of you up here that can actually make the motion to reconsider because of the way the rules are on that. So.
And I can't because.
And you cannot because you voted against it.
I can't vote on that because I, I voted in favor.
You voted against the denial.
Against or however, in favor of what you guys wanted versus what the insurance company wanted. So I'm, I'm locked out of that. And we're missing two other people tonight, which is a shame considering this has been on the agenda for a while. Um, so.
So, so that's one discussion. The other discussion that we can have here tonight is, is there any, is there any interest in doing something else? You know, so there's, you know, of, you know.
Well, you know, I have an interest in that.
So what?
And I have an interest in that.
So, so, okay. So that, that can be brought up. We can't take action on council like, so all that's on the committee, on the next agenda item or on council that we can take action on is to either reconsider it. And if, even if we do reconsider it, all you can do is deny or not deny the claim. You cannot, all that does is change the timeframe of which they can sue us and take it to court. It doesn't, by not denying the claim does not give them any money. Doesn't change a thing. It just changes the timeframe on all this. And Jeff, you can jump in and correct me if I'm saying anything wrong.
The only thing that would change that is if we run is grant them money right now.
Which we can't do tonight.
But we can talk about.
We can talk about it at the cow. If you want to grant them, if you want to pay their claims, that's, you're right. It's a, I'll, I mean, it's a horrible precedent. I mean, I understand, I, I, it really, it, it, this is not the first time this has happened. It won't be the last time. And there's, you know, from the city's liability standpoint, I don't believe we're liable. I feel horrible about what happened. That doesn't mean it, I'm just, I've, I've gotta look for everyone's best interest here as a whole. It's not my money to be able to just give it out. However, there are other options that you could look at that, you know, if anyone wants to talk about different things, here's the time we can do it. So. Do we want to tackle that first or do we want to tackle, is there any interest in reconsideration?
Just for thinking, uh, we ought to look at, well, how many times we've had any situations similar to this that we can have any record of.
Every time this has come forward and we've never paid a claim on this.
I understand that.
That's your history.
Um, it's either carrying some kind of insurance that we might not have carried in the past.
We have had insurance in the past for this at some periods.
That, or we could also figure out if there was any kind of supplemental help, uh, in some other form that we could envision.
That's always, that's always your option. Yes.
And create some kind of, um, um, second safety net fund or something like that. And I think we ought to have that kind of a discussion after this because I think we're going to see more of these down the road than.
Well, there's really no reason we're going to see more or less of these. I mean, they're.
No, I'm just saying it, it's something that is, if we find there's been though infrequent, but having something happen. And we have citizens who are in this position.
I mean, each case will be individual.
Do we pay attention to it? We ought to have a discussion.
I, I have a, a few comments. Uh, this is pretty much a liability issue as, as far as, as far as I see things. Um, I live in a lower lying property. Uh, we've had water in our basement. I'll bet it's been clear water, not, uh, uh, not soiled water. Um, we've had FEMA out. I do carry flood insurance or not flood, yes, I do carry flood insurance, Gus. You know, five, $600 a year, but it's worthwhile coverage. Um, the insurance company clearly states that the duties of the city were done. Um, Scott's letter does indicate that every five years, uh, manholes are inspected. Uh, they clean lines every five years. So it's just a god awful situation that occurs to people that own homes. It's, it's an unfortunate situation. Um, as I mentioned it, when we first talked about this, we do have some funds that are sitting out, uh, uh, from, uh, leftover funds that we had, uh, from, uh, and we could set up a, 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 a low cost loan program to assist homeowners and, you know, taking care of this issue. Um, yeah. As far as again, the liability of this, I don't believe the city has liability to pay claims in full. But I, I think we can offer that type of financial assistance if the council is so willing to do that on a loan basis.
And I would support that. If you, if you guys wanted to do something like that, we could find a mechanism. Um, you know, we'd, we'd have to do some sort of security agreement on anyone that we do that with, but, um, either a low or no interest loan. I'm okay with it because it gets paid back, goes back in that fund. Um, I understand everyone's timeframe of, you know, this is a burden on anyone regardless. And, you know, some people, it's a burden where they can't recover from it because they don't have any extra funds to do that. Or, you know, so they all have, everyone's impacted differently. So some people may take advantage of it, some won't, but it might be something you guys might want to look at. But I don't get a vote in this, so.
No, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of that. I don't know who else would, would, would not be. Um, it sounds like something that we would have to iron out, uh, kind of like the CDA did with a timeline on it so that the program can expire and then we'd have to restart it up again so that we, we don't get caught in a catch 22 into a, a program that fails.
It'd be easy enough to set up a fund that would just, it's a revolving, essentially it's a revolving loan fund of, of sorts.
Yeah, but you don't want something that fails.
We would, we would fund it with a certain amount of money and that's the amount of money that's available for this. And, um, you know, if it, it gets exhausted, the money's exhausted. If it's, you know, as loans get paid back, it gets refunded, you know, it's whatever your tolerance is on that.
No, I, like I said, I'm in favor. I think probably I would believe everybody would be, but I, I don't want to speak for them. Um, the other thing though is, you know, we gotta look at each case individually. And I think there's been a, a lot of things in this case to present itself a, a little bit awkward. And, and that leaves me with some questions of doubt on how, how this is all handled and, and, and where it's at right now. So that's my opinion. So I'd like to see it go up to council, but I can't make that decision as has been pointed out legally. Um, would we have to be up to someone else or, or we're gonna have to close it here in, in, in Cal and figure out how we want to, how we want to tell these people that they are or are not going to be taken care of, or they're gonna get a, a low interest rate fund or, or whatever. So I mean, I'm kind of, I'm kind of in a catch 22 where I'm locked in a, in a corner where I can't send it up to council. So I have to leave that up to you guys.
My recommendation would be to not send this up to council, but to put together a fund, uh, and, and it's something that we can't do this evening.
No.
But to put together at least the mechanisms of a fund at either low interest or no interest, uh, uh, to be paid back to the city to help these residents with their situations.
We probably can put together a package pretty quickly on that. I can, I know Sharon's in the middle of an audit right now or, um, some pretty deep stuff, but I'm, I'm sure we can get together something fairly quickly that we could bring to the next council for approval.
So is that a motion not to send it up? Are we voting on this?
This is just a call.
This is just a call.
But you got, you got four people who can, who can send it up and one says no.
You don't, you don't. Actually you got three.
Yeah.
But. Oh, okay. I knew someone. That's right. I thought they were both gone last time. You were gone. Okay. So you got three. So you got, you got the other two have to, I mean, you guys gotta let these people know where you're at and what's going on because we're just beating a dead horse right now.
So that's, that's my recommendation. I don't know what we.
I mean, it's on the agenda. I mean, you, you can, you can either show your cards right now and tell me what you're gonna do.
That's what we should do because we have the limbo right now.
Show your cards and let these people decide. Otherwise when we get back to council, there, there's an agenda item on there. If no one makes a motion for it and it doesn't.
And you guys know where I stand on this. So.
It just goes, so.
Well, I would not move to push it forward either, but I would a hundred percent be behind doing a no interest loan to help.
Okay.
I agree with that. I can't, I can't move to push this forward. It's, you know, from what I heard, I just don't see the negligence there. I, I feel bad for all you guys. Um, nobody wants that to happen to them. I just, you know, I gotta go with what, um, the insurance company said. And I, I just, you know, as Ben said before, I just don't see any negligence on the city's part there.
Now, all that being said, I'm just going to tell you this, because those are the three that could, those are the only three that can bring this up. If you really believe there's negligence on the city's part, you do still have avenues on this. You, I mean, you can, you know, you, you, you can bring a suit against the city. And if you believe you have a case, we're gonna be, and you win, then our insurance is going to be forced to pay for it all. So it's kind of a win-win on that part. Plus your legal fees would be reimbursed if you find out we're wrong. So in most cases. Um, but, you know, so it, it's not just dead here from your standpoint. If you really do have a case, we're just looking after what our insurance agent, our insurance company, who is the one that's responsible for paying this if it's wrong, it's, we're, we're, we're following the recommendation and we have to look out for the whole of everyone. I understand. I mean, no, I haven't had this in my basement, but I, 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 it, it's been a deep fear of mine ever since I had my first house. I've got more insurance for sewer backup than I probably should because it's such a fear of mine. Um, you know, yes, sir.
It seems as though we're interacting now.
Yes.
So I just, I'd like to say this. It was great to see a very efficient, uh, version of democracy, uh, working through the agenda, uh, uh, 15 earlier. And you did that on behalf of a better interest in the city of Mesquite. And that was great. What I noticed was the comment that you made in your summary that, you know, you have this big bucket of money, green, green resource, green, green money. Um, and you're struggling to try to find ways to spend that.
In terms of sales.
Yes.
Uh, so I, I think that we are appealing to you as a reasonable number of households. This is a manageable problem. This is not a $40 million problem. This is not a $100. This is seven households, all basically similar volumes and a similar neighborhood, all singing the same song for the same reasons. And it can, I understand the concern about precedents, but it can be resolved by the city of Mesquite and or the sewer district. The insurance company made a recommendation for the city. That's what it was.
Well, there, it's, it's a kind way of saying that if you don't follow, they're not going to cover it if we don't listen to the recommendation. So.
But they use the word recommendation. It's much like you use buckets of money you can't figure out how to spend.
Well, and I didn't use buckets, but anyway, the, the, that particular thing is apples and oranges. For one, that fund isn't our money. It's the credits we have from, uh, a different taxing entity that we built up over the years that we, we have to use for one specific certain thing. And that's all you can use it from. So that's it.
I was not suggesting you take the money and carry it back. I'm simply pointing out the city, you all, our elected officials are empowered to make a choice. You do not have to follow the recommendation from statewide services.
Correct. Just like we don't have to follow recommendations from our attorney when they say things either. Not necessarily the smartest thing to do, but you're right. We do have that option to disregard professional advice.
It was suggested earlier that tax credits might also be an option.
That's not, that's not legal.
That's not legal?
No.
Okay. What about a sewer and water credit?
That's not legal either.
It's not legal?
No.
Can you clarify that?
Um, it's against the law. Uh, you just, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't do that. I mean, it, the only, our, our only option would be to write out a check from the, the utility, write out a check to you.
Right. Well, let me put it this way. I see great concern about liability and precedents and I would expect that from you and your roles. But outside of you two, I see compassion and understanding and a desire for the truth to come out. What you heard is again, a very consistent story, right? We don't have time in our lives to conspire a grand plan to get $3,940.
I, I wouldn't, don't think you do.
That's not why we're here. We're here because we, we are part of the community. We've demonstrated that we didn't wait for anybody to solve our problems. And now we're here asking for a little bit of help. So as far as I'm concerned in my house, it was a $25,000 bit of damage. I'm not asking for $25,000. I'm asking for my medical. And that's it. And so with regards to precedent liability, these, these also enter the word humanity. Okay. We, we are your fellow citizens. We came here with reasonable tones and reasonable requests. And I feel like we're spending too much time about trying to figure out how the ring got there. This is a sewer main, which is maintained by the city of Mesquite. Therefore, it is their responsibility. Yes, there are variables they can't control.
Service too.
You painted a clear picture. The response was rapid. The response was great. Okay.
Look at you. How ridiculous we pay these people for sewer backup.
Barriers and giving us advance notice of these hearings. So we're not riding in the streets. We don't have any banners. We're here appealing to you as good standing taxpayers, citizens of Mesquite. And if there's a desire to find a way to make it better, we want to build on it. And I do get some sense of that here today. Um, so that's the end of at least my kind of version of things. And I appreciate your time tonight.
I appreciate it. Um, I'll let one more person talk, but, because we do, we do have to go on, but I don't want to get in this huge dialogue. So Mr. Reitz, I'm, I'm fine if it's you, you, you guys can figure out between all of you who wants to do it, but.
We've had one question.
Sure.
You know, I brought up about this, the, the ring they found faulty on November 8th on that manhole cover.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It is now April 23rd and not a thing has been done with that.
Regarding, I guess I'm.
Is there fixing, we're fixing it already?
I quite honestly, I'll, I, I'll look into that. I, I'm.
I guess it's missing. It won't clog up anything.
Yeah, I.
Well, I just don't want other people to start.
No, I, I would agree. It's a, it's a valid question. I, I don't have an answer for you. I'll be, I don't have an answer for you on that. Uh, I'll definitely tomorrow morning, it will be a question I'll be asking my staff.
Can I just make a technical clarification? There's a manhole cover underneath the manhole. What you cannot see are the concrete adjusting rings. So there's, there's a, there's a difference. When you drive by anywhere, most of the times the adjusting rings are broken due to even installation, corrosion.
Traffic, whatever. Yeah.
Things like that. Well, you said it wasn't a cause, but let's just be clear. There's a cover and then there's rings that damaged.
Yeah, they're adjusted. Okay.
And then it's acting or making a block. And personally, it's a city sewer. Your ordinance is very clear. The latter is the homeowner's responsibility and they are required to maintain it. The city is required to maintain their sewer. And regardless of that ring fell in there, that, that soil and grease, it takes a while to collect it. And there's also, I want to make a difference between cleaning and inspection. Inspection, you throw a camera down there. Cleaning, you put a jetter or a high velocity cleaner down there. Two different things, two different things that are going to be not apples to apples.
All right. Thank you. Um, for clarification, I'll just point out, we inspect with a camera. If we see a problem, then we jet. You don't jet for no reason. So just clarification of where our maintenance goes on it. Where, where do you guys want to go with this?
I do have a question though on MMSD money, since it was brought up. It kind of sparked an interest to me. We, I know we can only use it for certain things, but we are using it on the lake for laterals to, are, are we doing something?
Nope.
I thought they were gonna put money into, what are we doing on the lake with, uh, MMSD money for new piping?
There's two, there's two funds. Okay. There's one, one is called MMSD green infrastructure. That looks at stormwater. What that lake access is.
That was lake access number nine.
That's lake access number nine. That's soil amendments. That's on bay lane when you create a pond. The other one is the INI, the private INI stuff. What that is more looking for is how to improve a sewer pipe for a private lateral more than the main line. So what that.
So what a private lateral meaning going to a house?
Correct. So this is a fund, what they, what MMSD has thought is we get a lot of infiltration. Well, we do a good job with our manholes, but you know, they found a lot of promises. You own a house. That lateral, which was described as a private lateral from your home to the right of way, there's leaks in it. How do we make that, that lateral solid so that we don't have infiltration in? And that's more kind of working with the homeowner and saying, okay, we want to replace your lateral. Usually what they do it is we work for doing it. They pay a portion, we pay a portion and we're more trying to eliminate private INI.
That, that, that's my point. There's, there's programs from MMSD. I don't know, should we be looking at, is there money available for something like this from MMSD? Because we, we're sitting on money from them that we can't spend. We all know that.
Not, not, not like this.
Not like this. It, it's.
There's no, there's no way for this. I mean, like focus on energy. You know, you want to change your light bulbs, we'll pay you to do that.
Alderman, if there was, I'd, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I'm just checking because it was brought up. Yeah.
The millions of dollars we pay to MMSD every year, if we can get some of that back, I'd love to.
I heard everybody, I don't want to dwell on all this. I know where you all stand. I think everybody knows where everybody stands on this. Um, we, we brought up a, a very nice appeal at the end there. Very, very, I applaud you on your, on your speech there. Matter of fact, you did a great job in, in, in the beginning too. Um, you ought to, you ought to go into the profession of, of giving speeches. Um, cap, the word cap. Can we provide money? This was open for dialogue. Okay. We don't want to pay, we don't want to pay them. Do, do we want to say, okay, we're going to cap this at $5,000 a person or something? I'm throwing it out there for discussion.
Can you do, I, I would ask the council, if you have interest in, in, in creating this revolving loan fund for people that have experienced sewer backups, allow me to sit down with finance.
Well, I understand that, but I'm talking about a cap of giving them money. Well, it's like a grant or something, free money.
Mr. Alderman, let me just finish my point. Let me sit down with finance and come back at the next committee, the whole, what our options are, how much total we can have, and then we can set whatever caps you want. I mean, if we have a hundred thousand dollars.
But this is a loan to them though.
It's a loan. Yeah.
I'm talking about a cap of money going to them to pay for their damages.
A grant. You're talking about a grant.
25,000, he has 3,900. We, okay, we'll do a five, I would just sort out, we'll do a 5,000 cap. Sorry. Sorry, we'll give you five, you lost twenty, you get thirty-nine hundred, you don't get five thousand. That's just a thought, from your speech, it kinda just.
You, you, you guys control the purse strings.
I just, I threw it out there.
I wouldn't recommend it, but you could do that.
I'm just trying to, I mean, I, I felt on, I mean, he did what he's supposed to do.
I think we need to build.
He said what he's supposed to say.
Parameters this fund in a, you know, in a businesslike manner.
Yes.
And come up with something that makes a lot of sense. We do have empathy for what, you know, what your situation is, and we'll try to do the best that we can to put together some funds that, that hopefully can be available for your use. But we need to do that in a, in a situation.
So is that, is that the consensus of council? We want to bring something back? I'll put together something for the next, we'll do a call at our next council meeting, we can discuss the parameters of it, give you what our options are, and you can go.
It sounds like that, you know, it's, I'm not against it, but it sounds like something I, I have to settle for, so I just can point that out.
Anything else on this? Yes, sir?
Power of Technology checked with Scott, they didn't replace the ring right now. Just to let you know, we probably are gonna dig up that manhole to kinda, you saw it sunk a little bit, so in order to do that, but we can't do it during winter time, but we're gonna have to take up the road to kinda get that and fix that, just to let everyone know. But it is, it was a question, I, I got you an answer for that, so.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, we're hoping to fix that as well, so.
Thank you.
Good works.
All right. That's it for this item. Moving on to the next item, discussed process for appointing a municipal judge. As you're all aware, Shelley Grogan was elected to the Circuit Court of Appeals. She's our new municipal judge with one year under her belt. She does take office in, yeah, August first. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find my memo. There's a memo in your pack, in, in your packet that kinda goes over some, a proposed timeframe that we could do on this. You guys can go with this, butcher it, add to it, whatever you want, it's your appointment. However, my, what would be ideal would be to have a candidate in place with enough time that they could spend time with, with her for at least, I would say, minimum of a month to kinda learn the ropes. So that's one thing. So look at this timeframe, the one I'm proposing. We would try to get the position posted tomorrow or the next day. We would keep that open with a deadline to accept the applications and resumes until May fourteenth. Gives us a number of times to try to get the word out there and propose it. You know, if you know of any attorneys that might be interested in this or anyone in the legal profession that might be interested in this, you know, encourage them. We would conduct, the following week I would get you the, all the applications that came in. So I'll give you copies of all of them. You guys have, gives you about a week to kinda go through them. May twenty-fifth, we would have a call to interview the candidates and you would elect, vote that night on who you want to appoint. Now, that person would be appointed to fill out the term from now until April. April, with the April elections, there will be an election for a municipal judge to fill the remainder of her term. So that would be, it's a four-year term that would give her, give that person, or whoever wins that post would have two more years if they win that election, if provided there's a contested election. They may run unopposed like she did, so. That's, so that's kinda my, my recommendation and a timeframe on that. If we followed that timeframe, that would give the appointee the following court dates, June ninth, the twenty-third, fourteenth, and twenty-eighth to mirror her, or to shadow her, I should say, in court. Now, knowing that those are key vacation months, there's a good chance whoever gets appointed can't make one or two of those. So that's why it's kinda nice to have the four there so they, we'll be able to, you know, work with her and we can have, have her hit the ground running per se.
This looks like as good a timeline as you can put together. What? This looks like as good a timeline as you can put together.
I, I worked a little bit at it.
It's good.
Any questions?
Yep.
All right. The other question I have is, do you, do you want the qualifications for our municipal judge to be a licensed attorney? Half of them in the state aren't. So my only reason I would even bring that up is, we had, she ran unopposed. What are we gonna get for candidates?
There has, there is a.